Thank you. I'm going to call this meeting of the Laramie City Council to order. Let the record reflect, it's a regular business meeting. The date is October 4th, 2016, and the time is 6:30 PM. First item on our agenda is roll call.
Hanson.
Here.
Henry.
Here.
Shumway.
Here.
Schuster.
Here.
Somerville.
Here.
Vitale.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Pierce.
Here.
Pelikas.
Here.
That is nine present and zero absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. And would you all join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I have two proclamations here, and I'll read the first one. The first one has to do with community planning. Whereas change is constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, rural areas, and other places. And whereas, community planning and plans can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work and live. And whereas, community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their communities. And whereas, the full benefit of planning requires public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation. And whereas, the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories. And whereas, the American Planning Association and its professional institute, the American Institute of Certified Planners, endorse the National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight the contributions, sound planning, and planning implementation made to the quality of our settlements and environment. And whereas, the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us an opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of members of the Planning Commission and other city planners who have contributed to their time, expertise, and improvement of Laramie, Wyoming. Whereas, we recognize that many valuable contributions made by professional community and regional planners of Laramie, Wyoming, and extend our heartfelt thanks for their continued commitment to public service by these professionals. Therefore, be it resolved that the month of October 2016 is hereby designated as Community Planning Month. And I believe our city planners or our planning director is here. Mr. Teeny. We have the whole planning department here.
Small but mighty.
So, thank you, and please say a few words if you'd like to.
First off, just want to thank the council, as well as the community of Laramie, for continuing to support planning and planning efforts that we do throughout the year, throughout the ages, and people before us, and the people that'll come after us. Also, just as it says in the proclamation, thanking the Planning Commission for their service as well. A somewhat thankless job sometimes, but a very important job for the community in looking at those planning decisions and providing recommendations to the council for projects that come through Laramie. So, we thank you, and we thank the Laramie community.
All right, my next proclamation has to do with our safe house and domestic violence. And it reads as follows. Whereas, October serves as an opportunity to renew our commitment to preventing domestic violence and assisting those who suffer from those crimes against them. And whereas, home should be a place of warmth, unconditional love, tranquility, and security. And for most of us and family can indeed be counted among our greatest blessings. Tragically, for many in this country, these blessings are eroded by violence and fear. Whereas, the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity due to systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control or abuse. And whereas, 2,513 domestic violent incidents is reported to law enforcement in Wyoming in 2015, with 395 of those incidents being called to dispatch in Albany County. Whereas, 60 women have lost their lives to domestic violence in Wyoming since 1985. Whereas, the Center for Disease Control and National Institute for Justice state that women are not a significantly greater risk of intimate partner violence than men. By conservative estimates, one in every four women will experience domestic violence in their lifetime. Whereas, domestic violence is a serious crime that affects people of all races, age, income levels, and sexes. Whereas, domestic violence costs the nation billions of dollars annually in medical expenses, police and court costs, shelters and foster care, sick leave, absenteeism, non-productivity. And whereas, a coalition of organizations such as law enforcement officials, those involved with shelters and hotline services, healthcare providers, clergy, and other concerned citizens have emerged to directly confront this crisis and are helping in the effort to end domestic violence. We must recognize the compassion and dedication of these volunteers and professionals, applaud their efforts, and increase the public understanding of this important problem. Whereas, only a coordinated community effort will put a stop to this hidden crime. Now, therefore, we, the City of Laramie Council, do hereby proclaim the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And I believe we have someone here in the audience. Lauren Denhart?
There.
Thank you. If you'd like to come up and receive this proclamation, and certainly if you have a few words to say, that would be very appreciated. So, thank you for being here tonight.
Here at Albany County Safe Project, we're working towards creating a community that exists without violence, coercion, or fear. And a big part of that is having the support of our City of Laramie to band with us during months like Domestic Violence Awareness Month in October, and bringing recognition to these issues. Because a lot of times, we don't think about, if it's not happening to me, perhaps it's not happening at all. So, we recognize that raising awareness is a huge part of being able to stand with and support domestic violence survivors. We provide services for those folks here in town, as well as all residents of Albany County. So, we're really trying to work towards a community that stands up against violence and speaks out against that, and is a happy place for our survivors here. So, thank you. I really appreciate that.
Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing. And this public hearing has to do with the redesigning the name of Iverson Street to Iverson Avenue. So, I would ask the city clerk to read the notice.
The City Council will hold the following public hearings at 6:30 PM on October 4th, 2016 in the City Council chambers, Laramie City Hall, 406 Iverson Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming, to take public comments on the following. An ordinance renaming the entirety of Iverson Street to Iverson Avenue. Anyone wishing to be heard should be present or may be represented by his or her agent at the meeting.
Thank you. Are there any members in the audience tonight that wishes to address counsel on this public hearing? Mr. Viner, please come forward.
Well, on the way in, I was asked if we had done this five times. I don't want this to be Groundhog Day, so I'll just say I appreciate the council's support.
And let me have, if you would identify yourself for the record.
Oh, Kim Viner with the Laramie Plains Museum.
Thank you.
So, anyway, I do appreciate your support, and maybe this will be the last time we have a Groundhog Day. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, please come up.
Kristy Anderson. My husband and I own property in the 100 block of Iverson. I also have a retail business there, and we wholeheartedly support restoring the name of Iverson Avenue. So, thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight. Anyone else? All right, I will, here we go. Please come forward.
I was pointed at. I'm Lori Kirk, and I am also a business owner in the 100 block of Iverson, and I also support this, to go back to Iverson Avenue. Thank you.
Well, thank you for coming tonight also. It's good to hear from our retail businesses. All right, seeing no one else, I'll close this public hearing and move on to the next item, which is announcements by city staff.
Honorable Mayor, there are no announcements this evening.
Thank you. Next item is disclosures by council members. Do any members of council, are there any conflicts of interest concerning items we're going to be discussing tonight for members of council? All right, I'll turn item number six over to the Vice Mayor.
Okay, I move that the following change to the agenda be approved. On our consent agenda, under item 8F, we're going to add number two, and it's an October 11th work session, and we're adding it so we can cancel it. So, that meeting is actually canceled.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Councilor Somerville. All in favor of this motion, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Vice Mayor.
I move that the agenda be set as changed.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second by Councilor Shumway. All in favor of the motion, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion carries. Vice Mayor.
I move that the consent agenda be approved, and that each specific action on the consent agenda be approved as indicated.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second by Councilor Somerville. City Clerk, would you do roll call, please?
Hanson.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
Vitale.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Pelikas.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero nos, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. We're on to our regular agenda, which is item number 10, and I'll turn it over to Councilor Vitale.
Thank you, ma'am. I move that the City Council approve the alcohol catering application for Calverman Steakhouse Albany County Liquor License to locate their license within the city limits at Corbett Lobby on the University of Wyoming campus on October 8th, 2016, from 11:30 AM to 1:30 PM for a homecoming tailgate party.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second by Councilor Henry. City Clerk.
Yes, Your Honor. As stated, this is an application, this is a county liquor license that is asking for your permission to bring their license within city limits for this one-time event at the University of Wyoming.
Are there any questions for our clerk from council? Any comments? Would anyone from the public wish to comment on this item? City Clerk, would you do roll call, please?
Vitale.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Pelikas.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero nos, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. Item number 11, Councilor Somerville.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I introduce this, I actually may need to pass this on to somebody else, because I think I'm supposed to be on the list to be appointed for the committee for the rest of the year. So, if somebody else would not mind introducing this for me, that would be great.
Uh, Council Weaver, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that council approve the memorandum of understanding between the city and the University of Wyoming, Laramie County Community College, Wyoming Technical Institute, Albany County, and the Prevention Management Organization for the purposes stated in the MOU, and to appoint a council member as a liaison to the Laramie Town and Gown Association for the remainder of the 2016 calendar year, and thereafter include appointment of a council member when those appointments are made by council, and authorize the mayor to sign the MOU.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second by the Vice Mayor. City Clerk.
Your Honor, I think that motion should be amended to say mayor and clerk to sign.
Your Honor, I would amend the motion to say have the mayor and clerk sign.
And should we add Andy Somerville's name to the motion?
Should we?
Yes.
All right.
Yes, we should.
I would further amend the motion by including the council member for appointment to be Andy Somerville.
The second agrees.
And the second is our Vice Mayor?
No.
Isn't Dale Stalder supposed to be appointed also?
I don't think that needs, I don't think that needs to be part of our motion. I think he's automatically.
It certainly can be, if you'd like me to change the order.
Room for one more?
Longest motion ever.
Chief Stalder?
Honorable Mayor and Council, about 18 months ago, through a number of different meetings that were being held, a number of people came together, all included, on that cover sheet tonight, the University, LCCC, YOTech, the Prevention Management Organization in town, the county, and the city came together, and we started a meeting on a number of different issues of mutual concern, primarily around the relationship between the community and those educational institutions, and the two government entities. And I would add that the PMO, which is a big piece of this entire puzzle, Prevention Management Organization officially sponsored items such as COPS, which is the Coalition for the Prevention of Substance Abuse. They have liaisons at a number of different points, with the aware team up on campus, with the STAR team at LCCC, and with YOTech. And the, really the, kind of the nexus of this MOU is to just kind of formalize the ongoing relationship between the governmental entities, the educational institutions, and the PMO to work on items of mutual concern, primarily around neighborhood relationships and the problems that can sometimes spill over from university or university students into a community, and the perceptions back from the community to those educational entities. So, really, this is a fairly open-ended MOU, primarily based around those different topics, primarily alcohol use and the responsible use and control of alcohol in our community, as well as the neighborhood relationships that go on back and forth between educational institutions and the government entities, the city, and really even the county, because they don't all live in the city. So, the hope is that, the one binding piece of this agreement is that on a rotational basis, each one of the educational, each one of the partners in the MOU will take their turn to pay for a one-year membership to the International Town Gown Association. ITGA brings a number of resources to all of the participants to address a number of different issues. Things like the big event and our annual cleanup day, which we tied together last year for the first time. So, those are the things that we're looking at. Kind of a brief overview, how this came about and what it's there for, and I would answer questions.
And also, Councilor Somerville, I know you've been on this committee and working. Do you have anything to add to that?
I think the only things that I, I think that you've covered everything really well. I think the only other things that I'd add is, this went to the county commission this morning, and they approved it. That would make the City of Laramie the last entity to sign the MOU. UW, LCCC, YOTech, everybody else has signed on, and it has some really positive benefits for our community going forward. One of the big, this is going to be a working group, and each member that's appointed to this group is going to be responsible for always making sure we have the right people at the table to talk about whatever is on the docket for that day. So, this is not going to, this is going to be a working group. I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Councilor Schuster?
I don't think we can get a better, I'm going to say bang for our buck, because it's $1,200 every five years. So, when we average this out, we're looking like $240 a year. And to get these groups together and do the presentations we have, and do the things for the community we have, I think that this is just great. I mean, for what we're going to be contributing, it's huge. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and Councilor Schuster, I would add that City Manager Jordan has been a member of ITGA for about the last seven years. I didn't know what those initials stood for until she told me. And I really, I really think that there's great value in belonging to that organization and seeing what can happen between the University, LCCC, and the different partners in this.
Thank you. Councilor Hanson.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to point out that the National League of Cities has a special group of university towns that meets as a subcommittee of the group. And I would suggest that whoever is appointed should go to those meetings as well, because they bring up concerns of town and gown in those particular cities, and there's a lot to learn. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Somerville?
I actually am a member of that NLC University Communities Relation, and I'm a member of the Federal Advocacy, the Steering Committee as well. So, and you're absolutely right, they bring in valuable resources, and all of this comes together and wraps around, and what we end up with is this giant pool of best practices and resources, and seeing what people have done, and what's worked, what hasn't, all across the country. There's absolutely no reason that we have to reinvent the wheel to deal with issues that are common to university and college towns.
Thank you. Councilor Vitale?
Yeah, just a point of clarification on the budget part of this. Not questioning the amount of money, but it says, general funds budgeted rotationally every five years. I've been on, well, in three months, I will have completed eight years on this council. I've never heard of that. Is there explanation about the rotation on that?
Mayor and Councilor Vitale, up until this point, that, I think it was $600 had come out of the city manager's budget. All that we're going to do now is budget it once every five years out of the general fund, whether it goes back into the city manager's budget or comes out of council budget. So, it's a little bit different, but each year, that's been basically a due, you know, a dues item paid out of the city manager's budget.
It'll be a line item then, for 1,200 bucks every year? Or 1,200 bucks every five?
Every five. And it may, it may not be a specific line item. It may grow just, each one of our budgets has a line for dues for professional associations, and it may be in that along with other professional association dues.
So, are they getting a cut in pay? In 1,200 bucks?
They were saving quite a bit.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions from council? Yes, Councilor Henry?
So, just clarification, is it being shared by the other organizations? Is that what I understand, that is, the reason it's rotating is because we're only going to pay for it the fifth year? And it says that somebody else is starting off with it the first year. I can't remember who.
The PMO.
The PMO is paying it the first year.
All of these entities will have, I'm sorry, I'm square.
Please do.
All of these, all of these entities will have access to ITGA and everything that's available. We're just simply rotating who's paying dues, so we're not trying to collect 200 and whatever it is, $40 from all five entities, get it together, and send it in as one package. That was a request that came from the entities to rotate it like this. It just works easier for everybody involved.
Thank you. Any comments from Council on this? Councilor Shumway?
Just one comment. I think all of us saw thousands of hours being donated to the City of Laramie this week with the big event, which is a part of this. And I, you know, it's just, the return is just enormous. And it's such a great idea, because it not only gives the opportunity for service to the community, but it also then has these Wyoming, YOTech, and LCCC students feel a part of the community. And I, this is, this is a great, a great idea. This is something that really links us together, and it's an important part of what we should be doing. So, obviously, I support this.
Thank you. Councilor Somerville?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only last comment that I wanted to make is, I think that we've had communications with these groups, but I think what we've lacked is a structure where these groups are going to meet regardless of who's in those seats. So, this group is going to stay cohesive and continue to work together collectively, even if people retire and move out of those seats, so that these communications aren't so dependent on personal relationships. They, they really are bringing the institutions themselves all, all together to continue to work on this, and I think that that's going to prove very, very, very effective. And Councilor Shumway is absolutely right. The return on investment on this type of group for our, our community is going to be huge, not just for the big event, but for every, everything that we can do with this.
Thank you. Would anyone from the public wish to comment on this? City Clerk, would you do roll call, please?
Weaver.
Yes.
Vitale.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Pelikas.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero nos, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. We're on to item number 12, Councilor Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that council approve Resolution 2016-72, supporting the development of a full pipe addition at the Labonte Skate Park, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second by the Vice Mayor. Director Feazer.
Honorable Mayor, City Council Todd Feazer, Director of Parks and Recreation. The resolution before you is of work to get your support for the development of this full pipe, full pipe concept at the Labonte Skate Park. You may or may not be aware, but the Friends of the Skate Park Foundation is a division of the Friends of Community Recreation, and they've worked hard on developing expansion, expansion ideas, maintaining the facility, and working towards improving the skate park as it continues to go through years of evolution. So, this new piece that they brought forward is the result of actually finding a salvage pipe that has made its way into Laramie, developing some donations as far as some pieces to pull together, and starting to work on some engineering in order to make it a reality for this standalone piece to become part of the skate park. I do have Josh Kaffer, who's the chairman of the Friends of the Skate Park here, that could answer any questions if you have them. They provided a few 3D renderings of what it could look like, and we'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Does anyone have any questions? Councilor Hanson?
Thank you. I just have one question. Are there possible accidents involved with this? I presume one skates and rotates in this thing, and I probably would fall right on my head. But is it very dangerous?
Honorable Mayor, through you to Councilor Hanson. Actually, it's not the intent for them to be able to ride in the full 360 or the loop. I don't, it's, yeah, they just kind of ride back and forth. The full pipe is actually adding structure and strength so that they can ride that circle. I don't believe, maybe Josh could clarify. Do you think anybody's good enough to ride that in a?
Defy gravity?
Not in this town.
Josh, would you identify yourself for the record also?
I'm Josh Kaffer. I guess I'm the chairman of the Friends of the Laramie Skate Park.
Why don't you just stay here, just in case there are any questions?
Could I add, if I could add a few more things, there is always inherent risk at a skate park, Councilor Hanson. And so, I don't believe that this actually extends the risk that's already going to be occurring at the skate park.
Other questions?
I have a comment, so I'll wait.
Councilor Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to provide Mr. Kaffer an opportunity to add anything that he wants to.
That's a good point. Thank you. Is there anything you'd like to provide to council?
I just, thank you guys for your support, and I'm happy to keep working on this project through this. As Mr. Feazer had said, this is really a step in the expansion plan that we had developed with Dreamland Skate Parks last year. And, and so, we're, we're excited about this opportunity to grow the park and grow the community.
What's the diameter of the pipe?
It's 14 foot, and it's 24, or 23 and a half feet long.
Thank you. Counselor Schuster?
Do you need more volunteers when you put this in?
We are actually currently looking for an engineer to look over our plans. We have, we have currently Chip with AAA Recycling has-
Knowing very well, he's talked about it too.
Okay.
Good person.
Yeah. He has been, not only has he donated the pipe, he's secured the other steel work that we're going to need. He's promised to move it to the park. We also have Randy Love Day has committed to, who's a crane operator in town. If he's still in business when we get it in, he's going to move it. And then we have Colter Floyd for Custom Fabrications has worked with me and Chip on the plan that we're hoping to find an engineer. So, if anyone here knows an engineer who might be willing, then that'd be great. Otherwise, we'd love your input on fundraisers and stuff like that.
Don't know of engineers, but I could get you 50 bodies if you needed, just plain muscle work to-
Thank you. Yeah. We may. I'll get your information. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Counselor Vitale, you have a comment?
Well, actually, yeah, I do have a comment. I'm not going to support this. It's not that I am against the expansion of recreation opportunities for our citizens and our youth, but I find it somewhat disturbing that we have a group now friends of the skate park. And I commend you folks for getting together, and I hope your fundraising to pay for the engineering, the $3,000 is very successful. But what I'm bothered by is, we had a group previously called Friends of the Undine Park, who had a dream of having a gazebo. And previous councils initiated that process, put money aside. We had the design, and that project, for some reason, just seemed to lag and lag and lag and didn't have much of a priority from recreation. And this group of citizens, who worked for so many years, more years than some of us have lived in Laramie, to start Arts in a Park project and to promote, you know, those activities. They also, when they disbanded, and I guess they disbanded because of the dwindling membership, because of age, and so on and so forth, donated $11,000 to the city to build that gazebo. We had the design. The design come in, we looked at it, we sent it back to have some adjustments to it. It came back, and I think it was $185,000 over budgeted. We approved that money to budget that gazebo. The design come forward. We approved the design. That thing should have been bit out. That thing should have been built, and that thing should be used today for its purpose to honor all the citizens that spent so many years and so many resources out of their pocket. Yet, we had a council make a motion to transfer $95,000 from the gazebo so we could buy a pile of rocks. I think it was called Road Base. And now, we're looking at another expansion of a park, and I also, and I voted against the Imperial Park for the same reason. Here, that park popped up overnight because of one citizen that happened to be on the park board, and they built over a $300 and some thousand dollar park over there. It's a neighborhood park designed for a certain age group of kids, of which I really don't have any idea how many kids fit in that age group to use that park, but the park is built. So, I guess I'm going to stand up for all them neighbors, all the citizens that put so much time and effort to build a program. We had it. We had their dream, and then that dream was yanked out from underneath them, and now we have another group of citizens wanting to expand a specific area of a park, and I commend that group of citizens for taking this project on, and I'm sure this thing will progress and be successful and get the support of the council. So, because of the hypocrisy that prevails, and I won't be a part of, I will not support this project at this time.
Thank you. Counselor Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if it's going to be successful, but I'd urge Counselor Vitale to reconsider. I believe, along with him, opposed that budget amendment. However, I do think we have seen that Road Base put to some good use since then. It is unfortunate that that project didn't go forward, but I'd hate to see us conflate those two things. And I just want to quickly just commend those folks that participated in our ward meetings and have gone to, I believe, two parks board meetings to advocate for this project, and all the work they've done. You have to remember that when we first talked about this at the Parks and Recreation, we were talking about that much larger expansion rendering that you see there, but reality being what it is with budget restrictions and economic downturn, they went back to the drawing board and said, "Well, what's an enhancement that we would like to see that is supported by our membership that we think would get some more involvement and some more use of that skate park?" And that's what they did, and they've done a lot of individual volunteer work for that, and I think that should be commended. It is unfortunate when we have to restrict the amount of money that we'd like to spend on our recreation amenities, because that's one of the strongest things we have going for ourselves in this community, I think. So, hopefully, we'll vote unanimously for this, and if not, that's okay, but I do want to thank the skate park friends for all the work they've done here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Other comments by council? Counselor Hanson?
Thank you, Your Honor. It's probably for our Parks and Rec Director. I still have a concern. Thinking back of the rec center, we did not, for example, in the pool area, install a three-meter board because of insurance questions. High school now has a three-meter board, so that's a different issue. So, my question is very simply, this skate park is a city facility, isn't it? Does the same insurance issue apply to it? You know, I'm coming back to this rotating thing there, and will the insurance go up for this skate park because of this installation?
Honorable Mayor, through you to Counselor Hanson. You know, there's the-
State statute, recreational claims?
The state statute that guides and protects some recreational activities, and the way that I understand that is, as you enter in, you take on a certain amount of risk and responsibility and liability for yourself as you move forward. I don't believe that as long as this is engineered and designed correctly, that it won't meet the qualifications to become a traditional s- it's not the first full pipe in the nation, so it won't be the first time that this has been implemented, and I can't anticipate that one would have huge concern over the recreational risk related to the addition of this pipe. Again, next to impossible, virtually impossible to ride the full pipe, and in my mind, there's also an added safety as the full pipe. It keeps somebody from coming out of it, and they're always hitting on a curved edge. So, I don't believe that the liability risk is enhanced because of this.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Schuster, for the first time.
Thank you. No, well, made a comment earlier, but I'm still in favor of it. I realize you think it's slightly dangerous. It's no more dangerous than half the activities we put on. Being a former player of broom ball, which I don't know if you've ever done that on ice and everything, I think you're a lot less susceptible to injury in this pipe, because like you said, you're never going to fall on a cornered edge. There's always going to be a rounded pipe. It's actually probably safer than half the items at the skate park, because when you come out of a dished area, you can ramp over the top of something and then land badly, where on this one, you will not have that ability. And no, there are not good enough people that will try to do the entire circle, and they would have to have tremendous speed up. I would see them making a third of the way up, falling, and sliding back in the tube. So, it's actually safer than half the things at the skate park. So, insurance liability on that park does not bother me a bit.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for the last time and a couple of quick points, that line of questioning was certainly well explored at our Parks Board, and the answers were similar, and I think a little more research was done into it even after that. But I think Counselor Schuster's point is a good, and you have to remember, in our parks facilities, there's really going to be no risk-free activity. Certainly, if you were really determined, you could climb any of our extremely tall trees in the parks and fall off, and so on and so forth. I'd also point out that there are skate parks in municipalities across the country that have similar features, and I think if you were seeing an explosion in liability for cities, that you wouldn't see, you wouldn't see those features.
Thank you.
My two cents. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Would anyone from the public wish to comment? City Clerk, would you do roll call, please?
Weaver?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
Vitale?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Polikis?
Yes.
That's eight yeses and one no, Your Honor.
That motion carries. All right. Item number 13. Counselor Vitale?
Okay. Let me see if I can find it here. Okay. I move to approve Original Ordinance Number 1954, amending the Laramie Municipal Code 15.10.000.0E to allow, quote, automobile service stations, end quotes, minor repairs included, and, quote, vehicle equipment sales and rentals, in parentheses, other than motor vehicles, as conditional uses in the DC Zone District on third and final reading, based on findings of fact and conclusions of law. Authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the ordinance.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion in a second by the Vice Mayor. City staff?
Honorable Mayor, City Council, today I believe you did receive an email comment regarding this item, and I do have copies of that comment for your-
They got it already.
You guys already do have copies. I will provide a copy to the applicant. All right. It appears that everyone has copies of that already. There'll be some copies up here if anyone else would like a copy of that correspondence. Regarding this ordinance, this is third and final reading. Again, this is an ordinance that would pave the way for a process to allow essentially light automobile services in the downtown district, subject to conditional use permit approval. Again, conditional use permit approval is an approval that requires, is done by the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission will look at each individual application within the district to determine whether or not it meets the required findings, and whether or not it is in character with that specific location. At the second reading, which occurred on the 27th, and the public hearing, there is some discussion about the conditional use permit process and where appeals would go. Just wanted to clarify that any appeal of a conditional use permit decision is not to the city council. It actually is appealable to the district court. So, there is an issue in code where they conflict, and pursuant to code, the more restrictive provisions prevail, and that would be to send it to district court. I'm open for any questions you may have regarding this item. The applicant is present, as well as other members of the public.
Thank you. Counselor Somerville?
Thank you, Ms. Barr. I have one quick question on process. So, the DC District is relatively unique in a lot of ways, and I can't think of another district that has basically a separate board that works and works with businesses and works basically restrictively in that area in town. Am I correct in that?
Honorable Mayor, Commissioner Somerville, in the downtown, there is essentially a downtown Design Review Committee that is administered by the Main Street Program. There are representatives here that can talk to that program specifically. In our development code, when one is developing a project in the downtown, one of the requirements is that it conforms to the guidelines and the standards of the downtown zone district and the downtown design guideline. Our process that we have followed for review of downtown applications is to forward proposals to that committee for their blessing, to ensure that it is within character in the design guidelines of the downtown. So, that is essentially a subcommittee that only applies to properties that are in the area covered by the Laramie-Main Street Alliance.
So, my question is then, so this proposal, Ordinance 1954, did not go to the Laramie-Main Street Alliance prior to coming to council. It was not sent to them for comment or review, as one might think, might be appropriate?
Honorable Mayor and Counselor Somerville, at the time of filing, it was not sent. When we did route it out for review to various city departments, we did forward it to the Main Street Program for their comment.
Okay, and which we have received now, but not prior to bringing it?
Correct. That is correct.
That's the only question I wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Other questions? Vice Mayor?
So, if there were to be an appeal, would Main Street be the one who would appeal that to district court, or who would be the person who would appeal, or the entity that would appeal this decision?
Honorable Mayor and Counselor Pierce, in the event someone were want to appeal a decision by the Planning Commission, they would have to demonstrate standing, standing as someone who is directly affected, or they had made their presence at the, at the public hearing. An appeal just can't come from somewhere out in right field, just because. The appeal scope will be limited to review as to whether or not the decision was made based on findings, and if appropriate findings were made. Attorney Suther could verify if that's right. Perfect.
You're right.
I'm not the attorney, just a planner.
Mr. Suther, do you have anything to add to that?
No, no, that's, I think you got it, for our purposes, correct.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions? Yes. Counselor Vitale, then Counselor Schuster?
I guess it's a comment that will end up with a question, okay, that you might be able to answer. Recently, there was a business, an arcade, they wanted a liquor license. It was denied at that time, but they opened, and then whatever happened with the business and so forth, it evolved. And the arcade reapplying for a restaurant liquor license to go along with the arcade. And they were located, I think, on South Second Street originally, across from Sears or that neighborhood, I think. And then they moved over to where they are now, which they're probably fourth or fifth entity that's been in that building, that's been food-related, and it's quite common in that food business, that that's kind of the kiss of death universally. But anyway, my question arises that they moved from one downtown location to another downtown location, yet they were not required to provide any employee parking or any parking for their, or landscaping, because they're in a downtown business district, and they conform to all these standards, as you just mentioned, within that district. And yet, now we have another local business, been in business for many years in this town, would like to relocate, to expand, hire more people, get more revenue coming in, sales tax revenue, and it's on the fringe of the downtown business district, where they also have complied with all the requirements of redevelopment and development and the standards that are set forth for the district. They've been approved, recommended by staff, and they also been approved unanimously by the Planning Commission. And so, before us tonight is not the conditional use, but changing the zoning, so they can apply for a conditional use. And yet, we keep talking about all these restrictions and all these add-ons, which I think is, this is not the appropriate body to be looking at that. So, I guess my question is, again, are we not changing the municipal code and the zoning within the UDC so that it will allow for an application by any businesses for conditional use in the downtown business district? Is that what we're dealing with? Not the conditional use process itself?
Honorable Mayor and Counselor Vitale, what- Honorable Mayor and Councilor Vitale, what this ordinance does is it establishes a process for those two specific uses, the automotive repair, the light automobile repair facilities, and other motor vehicle sales to be allowed in the district, subject to an additional level of review. That's what this ordinance would establish.
Okay, so we prove this ordinance, then, then the applicant has to apply for a conditional use, goes to the Planning and Zoning Commission. So any member of the public, or the business district, or any councilperson that would like to see additional requirements attached to whatever the Planning Commission and that, that would be the proper forum to do that, would that not?
Honorable Mayor and Councilor Vitale, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Schuster?
Thank you. It's, timing was everything. Because if this had went from, and everybody still calls it the TNT Building, so I'm going to call it that. If this would have been in eighteen months, before eighteen months when they had left, none of this would have had to been approved. They could have moved straight in there and opened up business. No?
Honorable Mayor and Councilor Schuster, actually, the prior use, the ATV, the motorsports shop, was its own independent use. To change to another use other than that would require to be in conformance with code. A, a use as a light automobile repair facility is different than the TNT motorsports use that was there.
Okay, then I'll pick on a different one.
I'm sorry.
Ray's Automotive Downtown, he retired. He has now closed his business. But he only did it a month and a half ago, six weeks. I know another repair business that's thinking about going there, and he was light vehicle repair, probably a little bit more major repair, because I know he changed out engines and everything else for people. As long as somebody moves back into that and opens up automotive repair, even though it's three blocks further down in the downtown zoning, they can do it without asking anybody for permission. They can just reopen.
Honorable Mayor and Councilor Schuster, they can reopen if the new use is established within eighteen months of abandonment of the prior use. So as stated, they have a one and a half months of closure. So if an automotive shop, regardless of the name, same scope, same service, opened up in sixteen and a half months, it would be permitted.
Okay, thank you, because somebody is. So that one won't have to go through any of this, but he will be on the fringe of it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Then I think what I'd like to do is open it up to the public, because I know there's some members here that would like to comment. And perhaps it would be more appropriate for us to listen to their comments prior to us making comments. So other questions for staff that council may have? All right, at this time, why don't I open up, I know there's some people here, and also the, one of the applicants or the owner of the properties here, so let me open it up to the members of the public to comment before council. And if you would, all identify yourself for the record.
Hello, I'm Narina Nunez. I'm one of the owners of TNT Motorsports. What I'd like to do today is something kind of unusual, just to tell you a little bit about ourselves, because it's, we're not just a business, we're four people that started this twenty years ago. Twenty years ago, when we had this idea, we went to every single bank with our great business plan, and they all flatly turned us down because we didn't have a whole lot of money. One banker in town believed in us, and that was Stig Hollenby at American National Bank. And he was the only one. He put us through all kinds of, he wanted the documentation for this, the documentation for that. He made us do financials out of the wazoo, and finally, one day, he said, okay, I'll take it to the board, and they approved our business loan. Step one. Step two, we had to be approved for flooring, which means when you buy motorcycles, you have to actually, you're borrowing money to buy these products, and you have to have assets to cover it. We didn't have any assets to cover it. So we got our family. My mother, my father, my sister, her husband, Andy's mom and dad, Brian's mom and dad, and Joy's mom and dad, went down and put their assets on the line for this business, okay? So twenty years, fast forward, we've done really well. Last year, TNT Motorsports did over-the-counter sales, parts, service, four point five million dollars' worth of business at TNT Motorsports. We also feel compelled to be good business owners in town. We pay our workers a living wage. Our part-time workers start out at ten dollars an hour, and our full-time workers make fifteen to twenty-one dollars an hour. And I think that's a lot higher than a lot of businesses in town. And although American National Bank is way far away from our business, we continue to bank with them because they were the ones that gave us the start. And so we're loyal to people who are loyal to us. I say all this because I just want you to understand that we are committed to Laramie, and we're committed to being good business owners. Our old building was built seventy-five years ago, and except for two years in its entire history, if we want to talk about history, except for two years of its entire history, it's been automotive. It was a DeSoto Plymouth place when it first opened, and in the seventies turned to motorcycles and motorsports. It had, that is its history. It is an automotive building. And so we would like to ask the council to plead, to approve the amendment to the Title Fifteen and allow us to continue to, now, we talked about planes tired, that's not a done deal. If whoever goes in there is going to have to get permission at some point, as Councilor Vitale has pointed out. So that's, that's off the table. What we're simply asking is this approval of the change amendment to the Title Fifteen, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Actually, at this point in time, we're just taking comments, so thank you. Yes, Mr. Harris?
Councilman, Mayor, everyone, hello. J.J. Harris, I'm with the Laramie Chamber Business Alliance, so I'll just make a brief statement. As part of Laramie, and we represent the businesses, small and large. We're here to support them whether they're members or not. So what we'd like to say is, this is a small business. We support this. We look at the recommendations from the staff. We believe it would be, it's better to have an owner-occupied building than one that sits vacant. So hopefully, this, this change of use will be beneficial for everyone, and if there's anything that we can do to help along with the process, we'll be more than happy to work with all entities. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like, wish to provide? Yes?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name's Jody Shea. I'm here tonight on behalf of Laramie-Main Street Alliance. I currently serve as the Chair of that Board. This issue recently came to our attention, so the first time we've had to address it as a board was last night at our monthly board meeting. We spent a significant amount of time mulling the issue over to try to understand what the implications of this change may be on the downtown district. As this council is very aware, the downtown district is made up of twenty-eight blocks, and Main Street Alliance service extends to all businesses within that twenty-eight block area. So from our perspective, our question that we, we kept kicking back and forth is, what are the broader implications of this change on the businesses in the area that we, we serve? We had a lot of, you know, cons as to why maybe this shouldn't happen, and even pros as to why maybe this should happen. But at the end of the day, we identified a lot of questions and not a lot of answers to our questions. That answer is not helpful to this council at all, and certainly, it's Main Street's intent always to be helpful to this, to this council, to guide this community in the direction that we all know is, it benefits everybody. At the end of the day, we certainly have to wonder whether or not this change complements the development of the downtown district, and whether it really complies with our vision of what we want those twenty-eight square blocks to be. To be helpful to this council, we would request more time for us to fully evaluate this and give you valuable input. That's not the popular direction, I understand, but we would ask this council to postpone voting on this third reading so we can provide you more helpful information, because we do feel like we need more facts to understand what this means for, for the downtown. We do share a common concern with Mr. Harris in that we don't like to see buildings vacant in downtown, or anywhere frankly in the city. Our services through our fabulous director, Trey Sherwood, extend to all business owners in the downtown district, to include this vacant property at Third and Clark. We work with all businesses and have certainly extended our service to that property owner to find a tenant. However, whatever, to evaluate options to see what makes the most sense. We don't want buildings to be vacant, but we do want to be thoughtful about what our downtown district looks like five, ten, twenty years down the road. We're proud of that area. We're proud of the improvements and advances in collaboration with respect to that area. So we would respectfully ask that, that we be given a little more time to provide this council valuable input.
Thank you. Let me, okay, I'm getting into some muddy water here because, and it's, I think it's fine that you re respond, but there's two issues. I don't want to get into a debate back and forth. And oftentimes, we get members, some members of the public that wish to debate in this forum. So let me check and make sure there's no one else that wishes to respond at this time. There we go.
All right, a couple of things. Trey Sherwood. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Joy Thompson. I'm, I'm one of the other owners of TNT Motorsports.
Thank you.
Trey Sherwood was present at the first meet, at the first reading, it's my understanding, and she was supportive of this. And she's a member of the Laramie-Main Street Alliance.
She was at least at the Planning Commission meeting.
Hold on.
She was at the Planning Commission meeting, Trey Sherwood. And as far as change to downtown, there are several service stations already downtown that will probably remain service and gasoline stations, so. With TNT Motorsports having been there for so many years, I don't see this as a big change to downtown. It's just one that could potentially allow a business to go into that building.
Thank you. Please come forward.
My name's Andy Thompson, TNT Motorsports. And quite frankly, that is hogwash.
You need to talk.
That this is, that this is new news to those guys, that's, that is not true whatsoever. That is not true, and they know it. You know it.
All right, all right, let's, let's just, instead of getting into a debate.
So please, let's do this tonight. I don't need any more delays. I don't need any more of this, really. We've got a business to run. Let us go run it. Let these other people move and do what they need to do, and let's move forward. Stop it. Man, I don't know what you guys have against business, but whatever it is, it's not healthy.
Sir, please, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to the council? This will be your last chance, so. Did you get covered what you needed to get covered, ma'am? You wanted to, okay, I thought you did. All right, then let's go back to council. Comments from council?
Yeah, just a brief one, if I may.
Councilor Vitale?
First of all, when I look at the rendition of that building, the exterior, it will be probably one of the more attractive buildings, you know, in that whole corridor. The other thing, the last comment I have, not the last one. When you look at four point five million dollars in sales in the downtown business district, twenty-eight blocks, my last number I heard, there was over a hundred and thirty businesses. That probably has moved one way or the other. Is there another business in the downtown business district that has generated four point five million dollars in sales? And sales tax is what, six percent? What does that come out to in fifth grade math? Over a quarter of a million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in sales tax? How do you replace that in Laramie? How do you replace that? Especially, they've been in business for twenty years. I think they have a proven track record that, you know, that they're going to run a very respectable business and be a real asset to this community. And I, I, I hope, I hope this council can see fit to pass this amendment to Title Fifteen and then allow the process to move forward, allow the Planning and Zoning Commission to deal with the conditional use issue, you know, that they'll have to face. And, and I guess I'm somewhat disappointed in the Main Street comments where they said they didn't have time, and yet they had time not to recommend this business be allowed to grow at that particular spot, which to me is a conforming use when you look at the history of that building. That's all I have to say on that issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from council? Councilor Shumway, thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. First of all, I want to say this. Trey Sherwood has done an absolutely outstanding job in making sure that the Main Street is not only attractive, but also progressive. So, and also, I will say this, that, you know, Ms. Shea and also the board that works on these issues is very conscientious, and they work hard. They're trying to do the very best job they can to make sure that we have a showcase and a very beautiful and useful downtown. However, I believe six weeks, six months, twenty years from now, they'll still be trying to define the downtown. We're not going to solve every problem. To me, what we're doing here with this text amendment is we're saying that we're going to be very specific and very diligent to make sure that every person that comes in that needs to have the review will have a fair look, and that we will make that decision based on merit. And so I appreciate the interest in maybe waiting to make a decision here, but I think it's time to do this, because it doesn't take away from the opportunity of planning and zoning to be very careful in looking at not only this application, but any other application that would fall into the guidelines. So I still support this text amendment and this, this move, because I think it's responsible not only to businesses, but it's also responsible to the downtown.
Thank you. Councilor Somerville, then Councilor Hanson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So what I want to start off with first is, this is not about one business here. It is not, it can't be about one site, one building, one business. This is a thirty-thousand-foot view change to the downtown district. So despite, I mean, there are personal stakes here, there are motions here, everything. The decision that we make tonight cannot be based on those facts. We have to take a thirty-thousand-foot view approach to this in looking at the long-term development of downtown. So keeping that, everything in mind, that that's the decision that this council needs to make. What I, what I am concerned about here is that, I think that the city may have missed a crucial step here, and we should have been more communicative with the downtown and Laramie-Main Street when this was in the very early stages, so that they could have had much more time to look at this and get information back to us. There is, I do not find fault with the Laramie-Main Street Board that they met the very next meeting that they had, which is only once a month, to go through and provide some feedback. Having a one- or two-hour meeting to be able to go through something like this and compare it to your long-term development plans is simply not enough time. I do absolutely agree with that. There needs to be more time given to, to allow them the time that they need to do their due diligence. These are the board members and the people that the City Council and other entities have come together to appoint as stewards of the downtown. They are the experts. They are the ones that put the blood, sweat, and tears into the recommendations that come forward. And I carry a lot of weight with our boards. When they come forward and tell us they need more time, or they need something or a recommendation, I take those very, I take those comments very, very seriously, and not just for Main Street, but for all of our power, all of our boards that we have in the city. These are volunteers that do the hard work on the ground. We're not in the weeds. They are in the weeds, and we need to listen to them. The last thing that I'm very concerned about here is that something of this nature could simply rip the fabric of the downtown and the business relationship apart. And that is not something that the Laramie community needs. We need to be cohesive, especially in what we are seeing is definitely trying economic times. We need to be cohesive. We need to work together, and we don't need to be fighting about what could be possibly, what one person says is a small change or a large change in what has basically been, since it's come to City Council, a three-week time period. We've had three weeks at the City Council for, because this got an accelerated second reading last week. That's three weeks. That's not enough time for anybody. I appreciate the complaints. The government moves like a snail, and that can be absolutely infuriating at times. But government moves slowly for a reason, and that is to make sure that we do our due diligence and we go through everything appropriately. sure that we do our due diligence and we go through everything appropriately. Three weeks is not enough time. So, I'm going to respect my other members of council, and I hope that everybody will remember that we have some goals here of keeping a 30,000-foot view and not one business. This has nothing to do with one business. This is a, a change, a whole change to the downtown district. Doesn't matter if it's on First Street, Second Street, Third Street, doesn't matter. It's the whole district. And also, that we as a city council have a substantial responsibility to not make rush decisions that could have long-term consequences for our businesses and the Laramie Main Street Alliance and everybody else in the Chamber Business Alliance that's here tonight that could be dragged into infighting. We don't need that right now. We need cohesion and rational heads and talk. So, I would like to give everybody else an opportunity to speak, and then I would like to bring a motion forward for postponement to give that time for exactly that discussion, talk, and due diligence that needs to come forward with this. I think anything else is irresponsible of this council. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hanson, and then Counselor Weaver.
I'll defer.
Unless there's somebody else on there?
I think much of, well, maybe yes. I have one question. I think it's probably Mr. Tini. Why do we have to change the ordinance? We do variances to ordinances all the time. What's, can't that be done in this case? I, I do not understand that. And, and pardon me for being so dense, but what's, what would be the difference?
Mr. Tini.
Mayor and council, variance is not applicable to the use table within the code. So, you cannot ask for a use variance for any use within any zoning district within the city of Laramie. It's actually illegal, so...
We never do that?
We never do that.
This is a... Could you explain the difference between a conditional use and a variance?
A conditional use allows you that, it recognizes that there are uses that sometimes may be allowed depending upon the site, the location, the type of use, et cetera. That's what a conditional use is for. It's defined by zoning district, and so, and then by use. So, you're, you're very specific in which uses you may conditionally allow. Variance is a, is a change to code to allow for, for instance, a dimensional standard or a change to a height of a building. Those are your typical variance requirements, just a specific letter of the law of the actual code. And that's done by the Board of Adjustment under different parameters also of approval. It's much strict, much more strict. A variance is harder to find, the findings of fact that are required for approval for that, so...
May I follow up? A conditional use, then, why is it, would it not be applicable in this case?
Mayor and council, that is what you are considering tonight. You are considering tonight whether you should allow the conditional use process to, to be an option for someone within the downtown commercial district related to the specific use. Right now, that's not an option today.
If Counselor Hanson would yield, I think what's important about that question, what it's, what's trying to be asked here is why does not the conditional use process already exist in this zoning? Is that correct, councilman?
Pretty much, yeah.
Mayor and council?
Please do.
They, that is just not, that is not, was something that was in code during the adoption of the UDC, and it's something that's never been brought up before at this time. During the original adoption of the UDC, a committee was formed. Some of you, I think, even participated in that committee in establishing which uses we felt were appropriate within each zoning district. And so, through that, that was one of those items. As with any zoning district, as with any use, that is the purview of this council then to ultimately decide if things should be changed, whether it's a permitted use, a conditional use, or you change a permitted use to a use that's no longer allowed. But it goes through this ordinance process to have the public comment, to provide recommendations from staff, property owners, et cetera, that may be affected by that decision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further?
Well, you know, I, I'm kind of still conflicted because there's the old story about the baby and the bathwater, and I think we're throwing out the bathwater as well. And I wouldn't mind throwing out the baby but keeping the bathwater. In other words, keeping the matters in fact available for this, for this individual case but not making it applicable through the whole, throughout the whole district. And that seems to be impossible, so I don't know what to do.
Any other comments from council? Counselor Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This has been a fraught decision, I think, since the matter first came forward, and it is very difficult, and I think it's, it's a great example of what is often, sometimes so difficult about sitting up here as one of your city council members. And it's because no matter what decision we make tonight, whether we approve this, whether we don't, whether we postpone it, any three of those choices creates a situation where someone loses. We decide who wins in this situation, who is effectively able to communicate their concerns to council, and that's the direction that we go in. So, we're essentially put into a position where we cannot make a good decision because we are creating that environment where someone has to walk away feeling that a loss has taken place. It's, it's very unfortunate, and I think another thing that we've encountered tonight is the inherent difficulty of trying to pursue, and Counselor Shumway touched on this, an overall guidance process and vision for what is essentially a commercial district. It's a special commercial district, to be sure. It's our historic downtown Laramie that we all care about very much. I think everyone here in the room, everyone here on council feels that way, otherwise you wouldn't be engaged in what you're doing. You wouldn't set up your business there in the first place. You wouldn't have kept it there so long. And, and it's incredibly difficult to try to construct what a long-term vision for that could be for a number of reasons. We have a lot of independent business people who cannot be made to share that vision regardless of the best of intentions. And I, you know, I'm not sure what the solution is. What I am sure of is that these visions change, that the community changes, that the economy changes. I know we're looking very soon towards a change in our downtown district. It's going to, I think, dramatically affect how traffic flows down there, how people get around downtown when the old bridge is removed and the new bridge is constructed. We, we can't, we can, we can look at traffic studies, we can make some educated guesses as to what those patterns will be, but we don't really know for sure until those changes take place. And I agree, we have to have a long-term perspective. The question is, where does it become appropriate to restrict business development with aesthetic standards and other standards defined in code? This is also a very difficult question, and, and I think that point about cohesion is very important. It's, it's critical to these relationships, and I would hope, and I'm cautiously optimistic, that an amendment that creates a conditional use process is not going to blow up our relationships downtown and drastically affect our local economy. I would hope we'd be able to come back to the table and say, all right, perhaps that didn't necessarily go the way I feel that it should have, but we can continue to move forward with a positive vision for downtown. I would really hope that is the environment we're operating in, and I'm confident that that is the environment we're operating in. And, and it's absolutely critical. I would be very concerned if a decision that created a conditional process had that negative of a long-term effect on, in our downtown business community. I really, I would be surprised, and I would be very upset if that was the case. I don't think that is. The doubt has been placed in my mind that it might be, which concerns me very much, but I, I, I'm not going to make a decision based on that. I don't like making these decisions based on hypotheticals, even though we have to have that long-term view. This is, again, the challenge of our position here. I think we need to recognize a couple of things. Planner Tini pointed out, our director of planning pointed out some, some interesting things that we need to chew on. These conditional use processes, recognize uses that sometimes should possibly be allowed depending on circumstances. That's not the way he phrased it, but that's generally what we're talking about with conditional use process. It creates a little bit more flexibility where we look at things based on their individual merits. Conditional use permits create an opportunity for conditions to be created, modified during that process, that will allow a certain use. So, looking at that long-term perspective, that is what we are doing. We are not saying, we now think it's a great idea to encourage a huge business growth in automotive, light automotive repair in our downtown district. Now, if we, if we want to set aside that long-range vision just for a moment and look at the specifics, unfortunately, that have entered into this conversation since we began it, I think if I was on the planning commission and I was looking at conditional use permit for this, and I've been on a planning commission in the past, and this was going in at Second and Iverson, I'd be very unlikely to grant that conditional use permit and a number of other areas in downtown. This particular area, I'd be likely. So, switch back, long-term vision, conditional use permit process. I think it's appropriate. It's appropriate to try to maintain some flexibility and the potential for some dynamism in our downtown. It's a little long-winded, Mr. Mayor. It's very difficult, and I wanted to get that out there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Schuster?
I can't agree with you more. The thing that a lot of people don't understand is we're not saying that anybody can open up anything anywhere. Have we done conditional uses downtown before? Yes. We have a custom, very, very custom gunsmith downtown. He doesn't sell guns out the door at all. If you're going to go hunt in Africa and need a very large big game rifle, you would contact him. His guns are almost priced at the price of a car. That's how specialized he is. We had to give him a conditional use to be a manufacturer downtown, and he has one of the prettier buildings downtown. It's absolutely beautiful. If somebody came in and said, we want to make printed circuit boards, they would have to get a conditional use to open up to manufacture computer circuit boards because they would be in manufacturing. So, we would have to do it for that. When Turtle Rock Cafe wanted to come in and turn the old dentist office into a restaurant across the street from the University of Wyoming, they waited 13 months and eight days to get their conditional use permit. I hope that this planning, or that I hope this strategy gets streamlined, so it doesn't say that we can go in and open up anything anywhere. It is now given a process for conditional use permits downtown, and each one of them will have to be individually looked at and said, yes, you can, no, you can't. We have a couple of empty buildings down there. The old, and I'm going to call it Ken's Music Box, is empty. For a while there, they were going to put a liquor establishment in and brewery if they could have gotten the liquor license. They didn't get it, so again, I believe that building is empty. One of the biggest things I don't want to see is, and, empty building. I feel we have something that conforms to there, and I'm happy for it. So, this isn't going to say that everything can go wild downtown. It's not. Each individual item will go after its merits on whether it should or should not. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Vitale?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just going to make some last brief comments. I don't know if it was two or three years ago, we had a request from the owner of a dance studio who was outgrowing their facilities. They were buying a church in a residential area over by Garfield. They come in here, wanted a change in zoning so they could have a living work facility. We went through a whole lot of discussion, a lot of citizens battered back and forth, similar to what we're doing here, and council approved, you know, the, the change in the zoning. I don't know if they're living in that facility, but I do know I think they bought a house next to it, but that, that's immaterial at this point. But I've heard from residents in that neighborhood that these people have been very, very good neighbors. Their businesses have not created the disruption, the parking has not created the disruption, and, and things are working out very well. We have a similar situation here with business 20 years, very successful, and now they want to move to a certain location and conformed everything. I'd like, I don't know, this is the cover sheet of the, about what we're talking about. There's two things I just wanted to bring to our attention here, and I need to ask the city attorney mayor if I may a question about...
You may.
Okay. A motion to postpone, is that considered an amendment to the main motion?
It's a second motion.
It's a second motion. It's not an amendment to the main motion.
That's correct.
But it does state here relative to this whole process, the big picture, that this code should be regularly reviewed, evaluated, and amended if necessary based on private and city economic conditions, vision for the community, changing planning and zoning principles, frequent difficulty in implementing or enforcing any specific standard or standards or changes in the state, federal, or case law. All city or citizen-initiated amendments must be adequately vetted through the public hearing process identified in the code, which is 15.02050 LMC. And then it says, it is a professional obligation and responsibility of staff to follow and enforce adopted codes. I think they have done their due diligence, and I think they have done their job in bringing forward this recommendation through the planning commission. And here, and I, I agree with councilman, councilwoman Somerville, that we should support, you know, our boards and commissions and so forth, you know, they are private citizens that spend a lot of time in, in, in doing their responsibilities. Well, on August 22nd, 2016, the planning commission recommended that the city council approve amendments to follow, to allow automobile service stations, minor repairs included, vehicle equipment sales and rentals, other than motor vehicles as conditional uses in the DC zone, district. The vote was seven for, nobody was against it, and it moved forward for our approval. So, I hope we can support one of our boards and commission who has gone through this process and brought it forward to us with their recommendations. Thank you, Mayor. That's all.
Thank you. I've got a few comments before I turn it over to Counsel Somerville. You heard what I said last time. It's, it's, in essence, for me, this is, I like conditional uses. I like conditional uses because they're not a use by right. And, and by the way, what's not discussed here is a conditional use can go before the planning commission and be turned down. In other words, the use can be turned down without conditions, or it can be accepted with conditions. Okay? And I think that's really important. It's, it's, in essence, all we are approving is, are there certain circumstances where this type of business would be appropriate within the business district? That's what I'm trying to evaluate. And personally, I'm not on the planning commission, but personally, I think there are places possibly, such as the, such as the place that we're talking about, that would have a possibility for it to, to be a use. There's other places, there's just no way I would recommend it. And frankly, there are, there are service stations there now that we're going to be challenged in the future because at some point in time, they're going to want to sell those businesses, or for some reason, they're going to stay stagnant for six, there's going to be a situation where we're going to have a business owner in the downtown that really wants to maintain that use, and frankly, that use probably needs to go away sometime in the future. And if they don't occupy that business for a certain amount of time, it would have to go before the conditional use, and in my mind, it would probably be a bad place for this type of business. But back to what we're talking about tonight, and, and that is, I have, this is what concerns me right now, is in, in my mind, it makes sense, but this is what I worry about. I, I have a great respect for the alliance and what it represents within the downtown, which is basically all our businesses within the downtown, I would, I would believe. But I also have great respect for our downtown association, both Main Street and the DDA and the people that work on that, and they also represent all the businesses downtown. Now, what I've heard tonight is, we, we need more information, we need more, we'd like to consider this, we'd like to know more about it, and, and we'd like to slow the process down a little bit. All right? I'm not against that. And by the way, I look at the, I look at the, and by the way, something's been confused here because we're not talking about, we're not kicking a business out that's making 4.5 million dollars. We have got a vacant building downtown, and the owner of that vacant building would like to utilize it for a different use. It's what it's about. He'd like to sell the building to someone else that would like to utilize it for a different, a use. By the way... By the way, that may not happen. The deal's not there. The contract's not there. The buildings, it's all in discussion right now, and that prospective owner, I'm not privy to the conversation, but that prospective owner could walk away tomorrow saying, "No, it's too expensive. I didn't realize I had to do this, that, and everything else." So, we need to look at the use in that area and decide whether it's an appropriate use. So, I'm starting to ramble, and I'll stop. The point it is, I don't think it's unreasonable to postpone this for two weeks and give our Downtown Association and give our chamber and so forth and so on more time to discuss this and perhaps a better understanding of what we're talking about here before we make a decision tonight. So, I would certainly be in support of a postponement. Thank you. Counselor Somerville?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With that, I want to add one more comment before I make the motion, and that is that it's been pointed out precisely what I'm concerned about. The Planning Commission made a decision without any information or input from the Laramie Main Street Alliance because it wasn't taken to them before it went to the Planning Commission. And I think that that's where the city failed in a critical misstep and has really put us, put us all in a bad spot. So, with that being said, I would like to make a motion to postpone this until November 15th, 2016, being that the Laramie Main Street Board will not meet again until, I believe, the first Monday, which is the 7th, November 7th. So, that's to give them one board meeting to gather their information and go through things and bring it back to the city council.
Second. Thank you. Is the motion second by Vice Mayor? Discussion on, further discussion on the postponement. I've got a comment from one of our planners. Mr. Bloom?
Honorable Mayor and City Council, just want to clarify the review process really quick. The application was filed on August 12th after meetings with the applicant. I think they're August 8th, 9th, 10th, a little bit earlier. There was a very expedited review period. Comments were distributed to our usual people we routed our comments to, including downtown, on the 12th. We asked for a four-day turnaround August 16th so we could have time to draft up our staff report for the Planning Commission on the 22nd. At that time, we were asked to expedite that to be business-friendly, to help them get a decision to make it move forward. So, unfortunately, there was a very short review period and it limited comments. I just want to clarify, everyone was involved upfront. It was just very consolidated for the review period. In the initial email to Trey, she was hesitant to make an opinion. She promptly got back to me that next Monday after routing of the application and said, "Our next meeting is actually in September," which is after the Planning Commission meeting, and had been reaching out towards the owners of the building and also towards the reps from Plains Tire to try to sit down and talk with them. She would be able to address whether and when those conversations had happened. I believe there have been some connections, but not exactly certain. So, just want to let you guys know, there was that invitation for comment early, but with the condensed cycle, it did create some problems and people gathering opinions and making other meeting schedules work.
Thank you. Further comments on the postponement? Counselor Weaver?
On the postponement, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. I'm concerned about the length of time, and I wonder if, Mr. Mayor, if you feel it's appropriate, if we might ask Representative from Laramie Main Street, either Ms. Shea or Trey, if we might look at a more accelerated meeting. And keeping in mind, I think everyone on the city council understands this, Laramie Main Street, DDA, they have full agendas that are generally just getting longer and longer with the things that they need to talk about. But I don't think that it's beyond the scope of what's appropriate to see if we might look at a faster time period to have a special meeting of those organizations to take a look at this because I'm very concerned, trying to be sensitive to business needs about the amount of time we're talking about here.
Thank you. Let me do that. Let me, Ms. Shea or...
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if you just have one minute or a week, calendars to see what they...
That'd be great. Let me take another comment, and then I'll invite you up here. Counselor Shumway?
Thank you, Your Honor. This ordinance was, had one week of condensed readings for the purpose of giving them an opportunity to prepare the building for the new owner with the idea that stucco and other improvements, landscaping, things like that, has a very short window of what we can do in our climate. And so, it wasn't anything to push it through for just to expedite, but all, but looking for the purpose of really taking an empty building that obviously could use a facelift to get that facelift in place before time ran out. So, I think that that was something that the council attempted to do for the purpose of giving them that opportunity, but I, you know, other than that, I'd be interested to see what Main Street and the downtown have to say about maybe speeding this up. I don't know that we're gonna help with their window for beautification and improvements to the building, but I'd be interested in seeing what they, what options that they bring to the council.
Thank you. Counselor Schuster?
I'm curious, if we approve this tonight, it has to go back to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission's not gonna hear it. I believe our next Monday, meeting is Monday, so it's not gonna be on that one. So, it'd be at least two weeks from this Monday before it even could possibly make dock it, and I don't even know if it would make it on that one. So, I'm a little curious on, all we're trying to do is say that people have the right to come in and say, even though this business doesn't perfectly conform to your area, we would like the right to write a, I don't know, I'm not gonna call it an appeal, but write a conditional use for this. And it might not be an automobile or repair facility next time. It could be light manufacturing. And I'm sure that most people that have a building downtown would love to rent it as long as they're not... I look at some of the things going on downtown, and I go, "How? We actually do this down here, huh?" During the last Bike de Laramie, I saw 'em build a pyramid about 15 foot of bicycles. I mean, it's, the things you see go on down there, it's like, gee, I don't think this really conforms to what we should be doing, but people would like the opportunity to at least put in for this. And that's all this does. This does not put a business in there yet. It gives people the right to ask for it.
Thank you. Ms. Shea?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. It's certainly not our intention to delay this process, and we respect that, you know, the 15th of November might, might just do just that. We have presently a meeting scheduled with our Downtown Development Authority, the DDA, on the 17th of October, and we could certainly make that a joint meeting between the DDA and members of our board. Depending on how much time this council would need to receive our comments, we could, we'd be happy to come before the council again on the 18th of October or even the 25th if we wanted to create a special meeting for this matter to be heard on that day. Thank you again for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm trying to get the work session schedule on the 25th.
Mr. Mayor, with point of information, I was hoping we might hear from somebody on planning staff with regard to those Planning Commission calendars as well, in terms of when those meetings are taking place.
Thank you.
Honorable Mayor and Council, you had some questions regarding the submittal schedule for conditional use permit if it were applied for, correct?
Also, Mr. Bloom, and Mr. Mayor, with your permission, just exactly whether or not this, this would be able to be on the next, the 18th meeting for the Planning Commission?
Honorable Mayor and City Council...
Or the next Planning Commission meeting, 17th, I'm sorry.
If there was an application made, say this ordinance was approved today, and there's an application made this week, the next submittal deadline is by October 13th, which, that puts a schedule for a Planning Commission meeting that would be on November 28th. There are some other items that have been discussed that would likely be required with this application. There would have to be, you know, a landscape plan that would be prepared showing what type of landscaping, what type of facade improvements are being made to create that pedestrian scale. We've been told there's an introduction of a new access and a change in traffic circulation that triggers a traffic study. The traffic study would have to be provided. So, there are a lot of elements that would have to be reviewed. This is on a state and federal highway as well. It's on 30 and 287, so it has to be reviewed by the Wyoming DOT as well. So, there are a lot of steps that take place within that six-to-eight-week time period. The only problem with that meeting is that is the 28th. That's right after Thanksgiving holiday. Typically, there's a Planning Commission meeting that we have had trouble getting quorums to. We usually try to plan in advance for that meeting. Sometimes we're able to move projects up by two weeks or back by two weeks. So, we really try to work with applicants to prevent that inconvenience.
Thank you. Counselor Somerville?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just really quickly to the council, I would urge you guys to all consider this request, and I, I'll defer to the mayor on scheduling of special meetings, potentially, but I will modify the motion if he'd like me to. But it does not, it doesn't sound like even if this were passed and a conditional use permit was applied, there's, there's no landscaping or stucco probably going in on this building this season. It's not gonna happen. So, this two, three, or even six-week delay, whatever it is the council might be willing to entertain, to give downtown the time they need, does not appear to really affect the timeline of renovations being done to that building. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I will...
Thank you.
...refer to you on scheduling.
Let's, the date that we've set, is there a way we can move it forward?
Would you like, I can, I'm more than willing to amend the motion to either do a special meeting on October 25th, although we do have two topics scheduled on that work session already, and the WAM financial recommendations and feedback will probably be a long work session. But, or we can do it on, the first meeting would be November 1st of the month. That would be a week later.
What about the 18th?
It only gives one day for them to have a board meeting and prepare and document feedback and give it back.
All right. This is what I would suggest we do on this. I think it's a very controversial subject. I think even what comes forward the next time. We are skipping one meeting this, we've already voted to skip one meeting in October, so in essence, we could stay on schedule by selecting a special day for the meeting, i.e. the 26th or something along that line, and still be reasonable. And I really think this issue is gonna take up some time for third reading, irregardless of what we do. So, having said that...
Mr. Mayor, I would amend my motion to postpone to October 26th and additionally set a special meeting for that date for consideration of the reading of this ordinance.
Thank you. Is the second agree with that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Is that a Wednesday?
It would be a Wednesday.
I can't make Wednesday meeting.
Okay.
I'd like to have that reconsidered.
Twenty-seventh?
How about 27th?
With the 27th?
Is that Thursday?
That's a Thursday.
Yeah, Thursday'd be all right.
Twenty-seventh.
Why don't we change it to the 27th?
I will happily change it to the 27th.
That's fine with me.
All right.
A clarification, that means the two council members who...
The motion is to postpone until the 27th, assuming it passes, okay? At a special meeting. Now, and I'm gonna give the applicant an opportunity to speak to, does any other counselors want to talk about the postponement? I just have one thing to say about this. You know, when this came before us for an accelerated process to benefit the business, I was all for it, and I even scheduled a special meeting, and I was all for doing everything we possibly can to make this thing go as fast as we could. Okay? But that was under an assumption that it was not going to be controversial within our community. I've heard enough at this meeting where there is some controversy over whether this text amendment, not for this particular business, but for this type of business in the downtown, perhaps needs some more thought and some more consideration. I'm not for accelerating applicants when we do have issues that need to be worked out, and I think this is an example of it. So, that's why I'm, I'm not saying I'm for or against the text amendment at this point in time, but I certainly am for hearing and venting out everything that needs to be vented out within our community. So, that's all I wanted to say. Any other counselors want to say anything? I'm gonna give the applicant, I, I'll give anyone in the audience an opportunity to speak. Is there anything you'd like to say concerning the postponement? Not concerning the text amendment, but the postponement?
No, we won't let him stand up. As part, in order to put our business in West Laramie, we had to take out a pretty substantial loan, and we took out a mortgage on the building in, on 269 North Third Street. Our new building in Laramie costs over $1 million, and so we did. We, this Voitec, when Voitec came along, they were trying to start a business. We generously actually made some significant remodels to the, to the 269 North Third Street, and plus, we have to pay our mortgage. So, we're talking about, you know, we have sort of a financial loss going on here every single month because we're losing rent because they didn't make it. They broke their lease, left. So, so it is, there is a financial burden to us as well. When something is taking so long, we are, we are having to take that money out of our pockets and pay for the empty building. Is essentially what we're doing right now.
Thank you for those comments. Would anyone else from the public wish to comment on the postponement? Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to roll call. City clerk, this is on the postponement.
Somerville?
Yes.
Schuster?
No.
Shumway?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Vitale?
No.
Weaver?
No.
Pierce?
Yes.
Poligus?
Yes.
That is six yeses and three nos, Your Honor.
Thank you. So, this item is postponed to a special meeting on the 27th of October. Why don't we take a break? Let me get my place.
Fourteen.
Number fourteen.
Item number 14, Counsel Shumway.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move to approve original ordinance number 1955, redesignating Iverson Street as Iverson Avenue on second reading based on findings of fact and conclusions of law noted public hearing was held on October 4th, 2016.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion, a second by Counsel Henry. Is there anything more that needs to be said from city staff on this issue? Does council have any questions for staff? Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And with apologies to Mr. Viner, I had thought this had already gone through second reading and that it would be on our consent agenda and thus the Groundhog Day experience, but it's appropriate to have it make its way through the regular process on the agenda. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments from council on this item? Counsel Hanson?
Could we just reiterate what the cost of this matter is? Because I was kind of blown away by the cost. What was it?
City staff?
Honorable Mayor and Counsel Hanson, you just took me by surprise real quick. I'll pull up the staff report. I believe it was approximately $2,500 was the estimated cost I had received from Public Works. That includes the money for labor and use of a boom truck for certain signs and manufacture of the new signs that would be located in this corridor. I'll get you the exact dollar amount quoted in one second. Yes, that is correct.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five hundred, and that's for labor.
Thank you. Just as long as we're aware of that.
And I, and honorable Mayor and council, I have talked with the Streets Department. They would be doing some transfers from their general fund of maintenance to take care of that.
Thank you. Other comments from council? Vice Mayor?
So, you know, I used to work for the post office many, many years ago, and I'm wondering about the other folks and, and like their financial documents and, and house documents and, and all that kind of stuff. Is that gonna have to be changed for everybody who, I mean, I, I don't know, I've never lived on a street that changed its name. So, all I know is, from a post office perspective, it's gonna maybe take them a while, or maybe not. I don't know.
Honorable Mayor and Counsel Pierce, I did have the pleasure of talking to the post master to clarify the process with them. They will, we will send them an email. We do do the addressing to let them know of the name change. They will go ahead and alert their customers. Actually, the city is presently going through that process right now. Our landfill is just... the city is presently going through that process right now. Our landfill was just readdressed, so the post office sends out a notice stating that you have one year as a property owner to update your mailing address. They'll keep the old address on file to make sure things are forwarded appropriately during that one-year time period. Now, I do know the county tax records still mail to Iverson Avenue, so, um, they've managed to get their taxes to Iverson Street in error, so I think it'll still end up there.
Thank you.
Small town.
Councilor Schuster?
Uh, I agree with that last statement, small town. Um, I have had things addressed to me on the wrong street, the wrong address, and the post office has most generously still delivered them. So I feel whether it is listed on an envelope that says Iverson Street, or hopefully they will all correct to Ivons Avenue, I believe the post office for the next twenty years would still make sure that things got delivered to the proper area. So I do not see a problem in that at all because they're good people. They work hard and they're good people. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, Councilor Shumway?
Well, I understand that all of Roger Canyon Road will be changed on November first, so, you know, that, that's a change, and, and, uh, I don't believe that this is gonna be very complicated for the, the postal service because, you know, there is no other place named Iverson I'm aware of, and so this, this will just be, no, no number changes, just a designation of the street or an avenue. Even if you just did Iverson, it would still get there. So this isn't, that shouldn't complicate this. It's just a matter of getting it back to the historic name, and I thought when Mr. Viner introduced this, we would go as a council very quickly, but we don't do that. We, we have to, you know, cover this thoroughly.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address council on this subject? City clerk, would you do roll call, please?
Shumway?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Vitale?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Polikus?
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero nos, Your Honor.
Thank you. The motion passed a second reading. It'll go on, move on to third reading. Mr. Viner, thank you for your, for your patience. Next item is item number fifteen, Councilor Schuster.
Thank you. The title of this is Original Ordinance Number nineteen fifty-six, rezoning approximately eighteen thousand square feet of land located at twenty-one fifty-nine Snowy Range Road, generally located on the northwest corner of Colorado Avenue and Snowy Range Road in Laramie from a B-two business district to a B-two business district with a ROB residential overlay for business district. I move to approve original ordinance number nineteen fifty-six on first reading, rezoning approximately eighteen thousand square feet of land located at twenty-one fifty-nine Snowy Range Road, generally located on the northwest corner of Colorado Avenue and Snowy Range Road in Laramie from B-two business district to a B-two business district with an ROB residential overlay for business district based on findings of facts, conclusion of law, set a public hearing for October eighteenth, two thousand sixteen.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion to second by Councilor Somerville. City staff, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Um, as stated, this is just to establish an ROB or residential overlay district on that B-two property. This is located generally at the corner of Colorado and Snowy Range Road, um, over in West Laramie. There are currently roughly four properties along that Snowy Range business corridor that do have this ROB zoning, um, so it is nothing new for the area. Um, currently, the applicants are trying to put an addition on their home and currently as a non-conforming use, and as a residential, single-family home in a business district, that would not be allowed, thus the establishment of the ROB. Um, to head off any potential questions, this does not change it from a business district. It simply allows the residents to operate legally there, so if they were to at any time move and that be demolished and the business did want to move in, that would be allowed under the standard B-two zoning conditions. Um, so I'm happy to answer any questions. The applicants are here as well still, so they'd be happy to answer any questions, even if it's just to thank them for their patience that they're still here, so.
By the way, I promised the applicants that our next reading of this will move them forward on the issue. Counselor Henry?
Okay, so, um, did you say that, okay, so if they make changes to their, to their residence, what, such as setbacks, will they follow the residential setbacks or the business setbacks?
Uh, Mr. Mayor and Councilor Henry, um, under the ROB zoning, it would be established as an R-three as far as setbacks go, as, as well as uses, residential uses, so they would be following the R-three setbacks. Um, currently, I don't believe their plans would encroach on that whatsoever, um, but if anything were to new come in that was a residential property, it would follow those R-three standards. Um, however, any business would follow the B-two standards for setbacks.
Okay, and so is R-three such as a setback, is it a larger setback, or is it a smaller setback?
Uh, Mr. Mayor and Councilor Henry, uh, that is our multifamily district. Um, I believe it's twenty-five feet for front and five feet for sides and rear. Is it fifteen? Okay, so it's slightly larger than your standard, like, R-two. Um, yeah, typically, it's to accommodate those larger, um, apartment structures and things like that, so they are typically a little bit larger than just your, you know, standard residential, single-family district.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Counselor Hanson?
Thank you. Just a question. You mentioned that there are several places similar to that. In those other instances, was it also that somebody was expanding a residence within the business that this matter came up? Uh, because I think if no change occurs, it's grandfathered in, isn't it?
Uh, Mr. Mayor and Councilor Hanson, uh, that's correct. It is grandfathered typically. Um, I can't speak personally. I wasn't a portion of, you know, part of those projects. Derek, there was one not too long ago, so he can speak to what that was for. Mayor and council, the, we had one situation very similar to this, which was essentially they were doing some expansion on the back of their house, so same, same concept. Another one was a garage, so, similar situations, all expansions to that residential component.
Thank you. Thank you. Other questions?
I guess it was me she wrote it down, but, thank you. Um, an eighteen thousand square foot lot is a very nice-sized lot. I wish mine was that big. So, expanding a slight amount is not gonna be anything encroaching on anything in any direction. So, uh, uh, this is a good thing. It's not trying to change businesses or anything else. They want to live there, and they want to have a nicer house. So this is a good thing.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilor Somerville?
My only comment is that we have done this, I believe, three or four times now since I've been on council. This has become pretty standard. We even changed it so there's no fee to the applicant for putting this ROB overlay on there. You guys will notice that on the staff sheet. Um, but I also wanted to just add that I don't believe there's any comments for this one, but in general, uh, we have had some comments on the other ones, and they were all positive. They, the neighbors in this area have no issues with these expansions and things along those lines, both business and residential, so it's good.
Thank you. Would anyone in the public or the applicant wish to comment? You're, you're not required to do so, but, thank you. City clerk, would you do roll call, please?
Schuster?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Vitale?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Polikus?
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero nos, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries, and it'll move on to second reading. Next item is consideration of future council work, work session topics. Does anyone have anything? Yes, Vice Mayor?
So, um, a couple of weeks ago, the paper had an article regarding mosquito, um, control, and I'm wondering, uh, when all the data is in, if we could, or if I even need to mention a, a possible update through, sometime in the winter, or?
Yes, we can do that.
Would, would that have been planned already, or?
Um, I will find out. Um, honorable mayor and vice mayor here, so I'll check with Director Pizer and City Manager Jordan and see what they desire to do, and then we'll milk that on whenever else we need.
Great, thanks. Cause I noticed in the paper it said only like three to four weeks of actually the new, the new product, so I guess I'd like to get confirmation of that, and, um, if there were any findings in that three-to-four-week time with the new product.
Okay, other, other work session topics. I have one, uh, in discussion with the, with the city clerk. It has to do with liquor law changes and also legal authority. Um, we're hoping to be able to do this sometime in, before the, before the first of the year, and the three items that need to be discussed or should be discussed by council have to do with, one is, is, is the definition of a, what a, what a restaurant liquor license is. There's been some frustration with our community concerning, right or wrong, uh, as to a, a business that is functioning as a restaurant and in the eyes of some is not a restaurant, and we have the ability to set standards of what a restaurant looks like and acts like and behaves like, and so that would be one of the topics. And I'm not suggesting we change anything. I'm just suggesting we put it on the floor so that it's out there. The second item on it would be parked licenses. We have a current license. It's been parked for two years. Um, it's now changed, it has, it's changed ownership in the form of a new corporation, so it will be parked for another two years, and council does have the right to bring that license back and put it on the floor.
My understanding on that topic, Mr. Mayor, is I think even the legislature is considering some changes to, um, how liquor licenses have to be used in order to be maintained.
I'm gonna turn that over to the clerk or a city attorney.
Just an article I read in the paper, Mr. Mayor, that they're, they are looking for something more than one drink sold per calendar year for those licenses to be-
Maybe that could be part of our work session. As to follow up on that, and, and the third item on it has to do with some liquor, liquor, like you're talking about, some changes with the liquor license. And help me out, clerk, if I don't get this correct, but in essence, they're wanting to expand, um, dispensary rooms. Instead of having a small room dispensary, they're talking about expanding it to the whole business, and they're also talking about allowing minors within the dispensing room, which would be the whole business. We have the ability to adjust that as a community if we want to, so that would be the other item we would be discussing. Yes?
Um, can we add to that discussion? I'm fully supportive of this. Uh, WAM has some very serious lobbying efforts going on right now for specific changes that are much more broad. Uh, the city casper has had a resolution for liquor law changes. I would encourage us to do the same after that work session, uh, regarding, um, how many population controls being taken away, different, adding new types of liquor licenses. There is a lot of legislation and lobbying going on right now, and I would encourage if we could do this in November, and possibly come forward with a resolution before the legislative session, if there were changes we wanted to see statewide, that would be productive for this council.
Sure. Counselor, let me go to the vice mayor first, cause she had her hand up, and then I'll go to Councilor Hanson.
In terms of this issue, do you know if it's being bounced around in any committee and what committee?
It is, uh-
Corporations, right?
Is it, I think it's corporations. Yeah, corporations. They, it was on their last agenda, and it will be on the next agenda as well.
So we should really get the most current-
City clerk, why don't we add that to it also?
We're gonna need a whole night on liquor laws.
You may need a whole night.
We're gonna need a whole night.
Okay.
Well, then, he drinks.
I'm assuming this-
We have to get a temporary amendment.
Definitely a lame duck, yeah.
My question concerns your first item, restaurant licenses. Now, they are confined, of course, or defined by state law, what they are. Are you talking then about enforcement rather than, we can't change those, can we?
I don't want to get into discussion right now, but in essence, we can take what state law is and their definitions- Yeah. And we can customize it and make it more strict to our community, and we may want to do that, and we may not want to do that. That's what I'm suggesting.
Yeah, but within the confines of what's defined by state law.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, so I'm assuming we're in agreement that that would be a, a inappropriate work session topic in the near future, so we'll work on that. Any other work session topics? Yes?
Ms. Mayor, just a request for advanced scheduling. We generally meet with our legislators in January, and I'm wondering if after the election, we would meet with those legislators earlier in either late November or early December, because that is really the time that we need to be talking to them. So just for scheduling purposes, if we could move that up from January to late November or early December.
Assistant City Manager.
Nice one, Dave. I'll score that one.
He got like a rrr.
I believe last year we did do it in December.
We do it in December? For some reason, I thought January. I thought we did it after-
We have done it-
Okay.
We usually do it in November, but we got stacked up, I think, on, uh, dates of availability, so-
Ah, okay.
Right now, we don't know who will be elected.
Who they will be, right.
Once we know who they are, we'll reach out and try to find those dates.
I reject that. I just want to make sure we got that on the calendar. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
All right. Um, I guess-
Counselor Vitale?
Counselor Vitale?
I had a thought, if you're gonna do that after the election, I would think that the newly elected people would be invited there.
Oh, absolutely.
Absolutely.
That's what it's all about. Okay, next item on the agenda is public comment on non-agenda items. Do we have any?
Not that are here, Your Honor.
All right, item number eighteen, Councilor Hanson.
I move that council adjourned.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion to second by the vice mayor. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or adjourned?